Please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 11th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting for the school town of Speedway. We're working on a 13-item agenda, and the first item on our agenda this evening is the annual board reorganization as required by state rule law.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the following slate. Bill Haring, President; Luke Bickel, Vice President; Tom Smith, Secretary; Nancy Johnson as our Corporation Treasurer; and Laura DeGaye as the ISBA Legislative Liaison.
I will second that.
Okay.
Do we have a discussion?
Is there a discussion on the motion?
There is. We should add to the motion Luke as the ISBA Legislative Liaison as well.
I believe Laura is supposed to be the policy.
Policy liaison. I apologize. I apologize. I did reenter. Okay. So Luke as the legislative liaison and Laura as the policy liaison. Sorry.
So we're going to call it a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think. Probably not technically, but sure.
Is there any further discussion on the proposed board reorganization? All those in favor of the slate as presented? That passes unanimously. The second item on the agenda this evening is to approve the minutes of our meeting on December 14th, 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from our December 14th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. DeGaye.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there discussion or comment on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor would please signify. None are opposed. So that passes unanimously.
Minutes are signed.
Thank you. The third agenda item this evening is to adopt an expenditure goal for the corporation for the 2022 year.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Speedway continues to exceed the target percentage, and the recommendation to adopt the following goal. The school town of Speedway shall maintain the current levels between the expenditures for student instruction categories and other expenditure categories as described in Indiana Code 2042.53-4 for the next fiscal year.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that we adopt the expenditure goal for 2022.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yeah. I just want to make it perfectly clear that, you know, law statute sets these percentage ratios between the money that goes to student education, student instruction, direct student instruction, and other things. And that we far and above exceed that ratio, and that we continue to put more money into the classroom than anyone else, than most, than ever. And then...
As you look this up, you can be anywhere from 40, 50, 60 percent, and that's the reason why the statute came in. We're at 80 percent of our funds that funnel and follow the student. We're roughly right now at $10,536 per kid. And our state tuition, of course, is far less than that, but with the support of the board and the community, with the referendum, that's the reason why we can spend the money on this student. And that's where the money goes, to the kid. So very proud of that, yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion or commentary? And all those in favor of the motion to approve the expenditure goal, would they please signify? And that passes unanimously. The fourth agenda item this evening is to approve adjustments to the 2021 budget appropriations.
In December each year, the board authorized the treasurer to transfer funds between accounts in the required necessary. Every record of those transfers is included in the packet, and the recommendation is to approve those transfers as presented. Please note the value of these transfers is zero because we are now moving funds between sub-accounts inside a larger account. The recommendation is to approve the adjustments of the 2021 budget appropriations.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I'll move that we approve the adjustments to the 2021 budget appropriations.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. DeGaye. Is there any discussion or commentary on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the motion would please signify. And that passes unanimously. Would you like us to sign currently?
Sure.
That is signed and done.
Thank you. The fifth agenda item this evening is to adopt a resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to adopt the enclosed resolution to transfer $977,000 to the rainy day fund from the referendum fund.
I move that we do that, that we adopt the resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bickel. Is there discussion or commentary on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. Would those in favor of this resolution please signify? And that passes unanimously. That concludes Agenda Item 5. Agenda Item 6 is an update on the COVID-19 protocols for the school district.
In your packet, there is a up-to-date, as-of-today listing of confirmed cases of COVID inside of Speedway schools, and those students or staff members that have been quarantined. You can see a history there that has happened since November. We currently are at the highest that we've been. Confirmed cases was 46 confirmed cases, and that is for not just students, but that's all human beings in Speedway schools. There's 46 confirmed positive cases. As you can see, on January 7th, there were 39. We have 55 people that are currently quarantined. That quarantine has not happened because of contacts in school, which is important to note. Those quarantines are caused by family members or cases that have happened outside of school, and those students have been close contacts to them. Protocols for isolation and quarantine changed on December 30th. For the first time since the pandemic began in 2019, the Marion County Health Department, the Indiana Department of Health, and the Center for Disease Control are all three lined up in what we should be doing with students or people that contact COVID. Currently, if a person is positive for COVID, they would be isolated for five days. At the end of that five-day period, if the conditions or symptoms are resolving, and they are asymptomatic, then they can come back to school on day six. And they are able to do that because our school has a mask mandate. If we didn't have a mask mandate, then we'd have to be a longer period of time. Close contacts are the same way. If you're a close contact, you need to stay out five days. On the sixth day, you can come back. The exception to that rule is if you are vaccinated. If you have a vaccination, that's either students or staff, then you would not be considered a close contact. So the Omicron virus is basically causing an issue right now. But we are still having school on a daily basis. The good news is it's not affecting our staff as much as our students right now, which is great because we can keep adults in the classroom. But we're doing the best we can to get through this and keeping instruction going every day in our schools. Do you have any questions with the COVID protocols as explained, or any questions with what's going on with it?
I continues to hear stories, and almost horror stories, of corporations around us, and I hate to compare. I really don't want to, but we do. And right now, it seems like we're the fortunate ones, knock on wood again, due to the fact that we have teachers that, again, showing up for work. We have staff showing up for work. We have enough humans and adults in each building that we haven't really gone to our next phase of putting me in the classroom, or Mr. Disney, which I'm sure the kids would run away on that thought. But we haven't gotten there yet. Where other school corporations, when you look around, they have a lot of central office, and they're a lot bigger than us. But they are, everyone is jumping in right now. So I think what we see right now, we have a couple weeks of some tough numbers. We're going to have a couple tough weeks. And as long as we can keep adults in, and we keep it safe with SCAM, we are staying, keeping kids amass so we can keep the doors open. I think that's the wise thing to do, and we're just following what the health department tells us to do at this time. So I'd love to have a discussion now on things, anything with the COVID-19.
Do we have a, is there a central policy, or is it school by school, or even grade by grade, in terms of how students who are out are being handled? So are, you know, how, where, what does that look like? And how do our, you know, do our parents know how to keep their kid caught up when they're out for five-plus days?
It's a great question. I can answer some things that are going on in the junior high and the elementary schools right now, and then maybe Mr. Borm can talk about what's going on at the high school. Right now, at the elementaries and the junior high school, we are gathering materials for them. Five days is, and I will say that of the students that we have had positive, most of those students have been able, large majority of those students have been able to return on day six. We've had a few that have gone past day five, day six, day seven, because they're still exhibiting symptoms. But, so to answer your question, we are gathering materials for them, providing materials for them to do at home. In some cases, there is some online, but not as much of that as we did back in the pandemic. Just talking to one of our principals today, and they were literally gathering books. If you walked in the junior high office today, there would be boxes of books set aside for parents to pick up for students to keep the learning going. So when you think about that from a teacher's perspective, not only are you teaching your classroom, but you're also gathering materials on a daily basis for students, and giving that to parents to take home, and the extra grading that has to take place of that. And it's taken its toll with our staff. But I will say, very proud of our staff, being able to just roll up their sleeves and do whatever they can to keep students where they're at.
And this worth talking about. Mr. Borm, I'm going to let you, put you on the spot here in a second here. But because high school, remember, some of these kids started getting sick in the middle of December. What happens in high school first semester? You have finals. You have reviews. You have the finals, and then you're coming right back into a new class or a new syllabus to the next beginning of the year. So I was really proud to hear what's going on at the high school on some of those kids. Could you, can you talk on that for just a second?
Absolutely. It's truly a collaborative effort between the counseling department and teachers, and admin, and try to make sure our students stay caught up. A lot of our students, our teachers put a lot of their coursework on Google Classroom. So even though our students may be quarantined, they're able to still continue with instruction, workload, coursework. And so when a student is quarantined, our counselors contact both parent as well as the teachers. The teachers reach out to those students. And then when that student returns, there's also an accountability piece where we're checking with that student to make sure that they're caught up with their work when they return back to school. And if they still need some additional interventions, we'll use our study table program. And I wouldn't say after-school detention, but different timeframes outside of the instructional day to try to make sure that our students stay caught up. So...
The Google Classroom, Parents Square, the communication, teachers doing one-on-ones with students if they need that extra help. Those are the stories I heard over break.
Absolutely.
Multiple teachers, multiple students, over and over again.
Multiple teachers, multiple students, and we've had a whole system with our final exams, because obviously at the high school, final exams are 20% of our students' grades. We had several students out for quarantine, missing final exams. And so we organized, Mr. Bennett organized all of the final exams, collected those exams. We set up things where students came in on PD Day. And we've just been kind of being, the word flexible. And I'm going to, when I talk about my piece tonight, the word flexibility has really been the key in trying to make sure our students stay caught up. And we're trying to stay as nimble as possible and making sure that our students are able to continue to learn even during these trying situations.
Well, I just, I mean, I just can't say enough, I think, how, I speak for all of us, how grateful we are for that, and just how impressed we are. And I can, I have a little bit of experience with having to prep my normal class, prep for the students who can't be there, prep, it's changing every moment. It's, I mean, and it is super hard. And so I guess, I just want to say to the public, you know, parents know, know that we are doing that. And so you need only contact the teachers. And that, you know, every effort is being made to have your students stay right up to speed. And that's really important, and that everything that I've seen has just been so impressive in that regard so far. And then the second piece of that is recognize also how difficult that is for the teacher, and they're doing it. But don't take that for granted. Just understand what the teachers are having to do, and the incredible amount of extra work in addition to running their lives in COVID that is happening here. And, you know, just, I'm proud of, I'm proud of us.
You know, as I said, it's truly a collaborative effort. When I think of Nurse Allison and the emails she has to send out to all of our families, and then as soon as those emails go out, our counselors are enacted to then reach out to those families as well. And then the teachers reach out to those students. So it's truly a collaborative effort to try to make sure our kids stay caught up.
I think another thing that's really important is to stay on top of those protocols. And I see that with our new communication system, that that's going out all the time, and the exact ways of counting the days and knowing that. And so, I mean, you know, you're talking now, unless you're tremendously unlucky and this all starts on a Monday, you know, you're not even missing a full week anymore. And so, you know, those five days, if that rolls into a weekend, if that, and, you know, you're not counting five school days, you're counting five days. And so, you know, again, parents, it's important that, not, you're not sending your kid back with symptoms, but that as soon as your child's asymptomatic and can come back, that you're, you know, staying on top of that. Because it is 100 times easier for the teacher when the kids are in the classroom.
Absolutely.
I wanted to say something about what you mentioned about the teachers. We were in a meeting this morning, and the number of, if you look at those numbers, the number of times that a teacher needs to prepare for a student that's not there, make up work, grade it, and it's overwhelming. And not one time does the principals I was in a meeting with today, not one teacher said, complained, said that, matter of fact, they don't even know the word complaint. It's just they, they're rolling up their sleeves and doing whatever they can to do to get students caught up or keep them as caught up as they can. So can't say enough positive things about our teachers and what they're doing on a daily basis to try to help these students that have something that they're not able to come to school. So, and I could tell you, that is not the case in many other school districts. They're battling some things, and our teachers just have the mentality, we want to, we want to keep our kids going. So kudos to our teachers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sit tight here.
The seventh item on our agenda this evening is to approve participation in the CIESC, Indiana Online Academy.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to approve the renewal of this annual agreement with the Central Indiana Education Service Center, the CIESC, Indiana Online Academy. The online academy provides our students with opportunities for both enrichment and credit recovery, and has a history of academic success with our students.
I move that we approve the participation in the CIESC, Indiana Online Academy.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there a discussion or commentary on this motion?
I have a question, Mr. Borm. Not specifically right now, but during the course of the year, or what would be like an average number of kids that we would have that would take an online course, either for credit recovery or enrichment through CIESC?
Well, through CIE, the credit recovery is normally done through Plato, our Plato program, so that's in-house. The students that will participate in CIESC, on average, in the summer, I would say, this adopted probably between five to 10 students max. What we will do if a student is unable to, because Plato is more of the credit recovery. If students have already been through that curriculum, so we're putting them back through that curriculum to earn the credit. We use a lot of things from CIESC as actual, almost a curriculum replacement, because just you're with a licensed teacher, there's a final exam tied to this piece. You can't exempt out of certain units with the Indiana Online. You have to actually follow their curriculum, their sequential curriculum. So we will have, during the school year, that number is much smaller.
Right.
During the summers, between five to eight, five to 10 students. So right now, I know off the top of my head, we have some students that are doing some other foreign languages through Indiana Online, the ones that they may offer. So we've had some students doing that. We've had some students doing American Sign Language through Indiana Online. So those are some of the, where we will be able to expand our curriculum using Indiana Online.
I think that's great that we offer that, the opportunity, be it sign language or another foreign language, because we only offer one at the high school, and I think that's a, I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. But all those in favor of approving the participation in the Indiana Online Academy, please signify. And that is passed 5-0 unanimously. The eighth item on our agenda this evening is to present the 2022-2023 Speedway High School Course Description Guide. Mr. Borm?
All right. Well, I think I will be as brief as possible. I know in years past, we've been expanding our curriculum and trying new things in terms of our AP programming. I'll just go over this. I won't read to this, read you this verbatim, but I did want to go over some of the highlighted changes. And I'll just go through this kind of bullet point by bullet point. And then when I finish, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. As always, all highlighted items reflect changes or additions from this current 2122 Curriculum Guide. Remember that the descriptions of the classes that you read in that thick curriculum guide come from the, reflect the official course descriptions from the 2223 Indiana High School Course Titles and Descriptions from the DOE. The only course descriptions not offered by the DOE are our honor prep courses, which were formerly pre-AP courses. And the title, because the courses are not describing the Indiana High School Course Title and Description Catalog, those descriptions come from our teachers. And those teachers have authored those descriptions. The next bullet point, I think, is kind of the biggest part of the changes of what you're seeing with this document. New courses and or policies may need to be added to the 2223 Curriculum Guide to comply with the recently passed initiative, Next Level Programs of Study, and that's NLPS. And if you have, I don't want to get too much in the weeds with this, because I think it would just make the meeting too long. But essentially, as you know, the diploma requirements changed, beginning with the class of 2023, our current juniors. So now they have graduation pathways. As part of those graduation pathways in Box 3 to graduate, they have to have either pass an SAT, either have three AP courses, either earn a notable certification, or complete what they call a CTE concentrator. The Next Level Programs of Study involves the CTE concentrator. So what we're able to call a CTE concentrator has changed from, so we have kids that are in the building right now that are seniors, juniors, and sophomores. What we call a CTE concentrator for those students will differ for those students that are currently freshmen and entering eighth graders. So just trying to keep all of this in your, in your brain is challenging. But, so with that being said, that's why I said that earlier, that the word for today is flexibility, because we want to try to be as nimble as possible. Some programming that we currently have would not count as a CTE concentrator. So for example, advanced manufacturing or architectural draft, architectural drafting, which currently counts as a concentrator for our students to earn, whether it's a technical honors diploma or to earn a concentrator to check off Box 3, would not count for our current freshmen and eighth grade, entering eighth grade students. If you've read anything about the Next Level Programs of Study, they're very, the competencies and they're very, that you have to complete are very detailed. You wouldn't even have the facilities at our high school to do some of the things that they're wanting you to do in terms of welding, or construction, or carpentry, or the things that they're saying has to be the concentrator. It would require a lot more funding that schools just aren't able to do. So that's kind of this, I didn't want to go too deep into the Next Level Programs of Study, but I definitely wanted to make sure that people were aware that that is something that we are needing to adapt to. Currently, as it stands, our project Lead the Way course, our course is IED, POE, CEA. Those do not have to change, and that still counts as a concentrator under the Next Level Programs of Study. JP and I met with Patrick Biggerstaff over at Area 31 today, this morning, to discuss what, you know, what smaller schools are doing to try to embody this Next Level Programs of Study. And so we're still gathering information on what we would do, what we need to do to try to make sure we have a broad curriculum offering to try to help our students. Now, mind you, most of our students are going to check off Box 3 by completing three AP courses just because of the, you know, over 75%.
75%.
75% of our student body are already in at least one AP course. When you start thinking about those students that may not reach that, that's where the concentrator really comes into place. Okay, what is the CTE concentrator for that student that moved in from our? Okay, what is the CTE concentrator for that student that moved in from Arkansas in March of their junior year, or, or even their senior year? What are we doing to make sure that student graduates with a diploma? Because you can't just have the courses, now you have those, you know, those three different boxes, diploma, post, employability skills, and then post-secondary competencies, which is box three, where the concentrator falls into place. So, some of the things, and, and we're still discussing different things. What we're, what we're leaning towards and what we've discussed as we continue, and this wouldn't be implemented for next year, but we're looking at some business pathways because they have some very overarching broadways in terms of marketing, where that we think our students that would not get those three AP courses would still be able to, they would still have the project lead the way, obviously, concentrator. They would also have maybe a business pathway, our students that attend Area 31 would reach that concentrator status. So, we're just trying to make sure we have as many options available to our kids that might, may not fall in that category of the, pass the SAT, or pass three AP courses, or earn a specific certification. So, just wanted to kind of make sure that, that was the biggest part as I was trying to draft this document. We, you know, this is just being implemented this year, and we don't have, we don't know exactly what we're doing for the Next Level Programs of Study. What we do know is that we do currently have a program that fits a great number of our students through Project Lead the Way. So, we do have several students that are in our Project Lead the Way program, but we want to, and we had it architecture, we had manufacturing, what are we doing to replace those additional options that will no longer be available to our kids that are freshmen and younger?
So, are we talking about those things that have to be figured out, being implemented for next year? And so, this curriculum guide will change in that regard? Or are we talking about those things mostly impacting, you know, whatever that would be, 22, 23, or 23, 24, I guess?
It would, it would be, well, what I'm asking is that for our current, and here's the other piece that we have to keep, keep in mind, we have kids that are currently in the building that are using the architecture and the manufacturing as their concentrator. So, we can't scrap that because they're currently going down that path.
Right, right. And for three more years.
Yes, exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah. So, if you're a sophomore and you're currently in that, you're going, sophomore, junior year, senior year, that could, that would be your concentrator. So, if you're doing intro, Mr. Roseborough's Intro to Manufacturing as a sophomore, Advanced Manufacturing one as a junior, then Advanced Manufacturing two as a senior, that is considered a concentrator. That's not a Next Level Program of Studies concentrator. So, I guess what, what we're, what we're asking is that there may be some additional courses that we implement. So, whether we do, we were talking with Mr. Dunphy about possible certifications in some of the computer science classes, because even our AP Computer Science program is not considered a concentrator through Next Level Programs of Study. It has to actually be, it can't be an AP course. It has to be Computer Science one, and our Computer Science AP program is really growing, so we're not going to completely 180 that program. So, that, that's not an option for us. But what we are looking at, can we expand some, instead of his business electives being, his other electives being prepped for college and careers, maybe we, we begin to build in that principles of business marketing as an entry level course. So, those could be a course. That could end up happening with, with the blessing of the board, where we add that course, and it's maybe not, you know, the, and we're still simultaneously running our, our architecture and manufacturing course, but we've added this business course so that entering freshmen and our current freshmen could start that Next Level Business Pathway.
So, again, I guess, so we're talking, it seems to me like some more substantive possible changes than our typical, we could approve this in January and fix grammar, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's a possibility of, and so...
But with that being said, in terms of, and, and you all have always given us this type of flexibility. We've always been able to still, even, even though you may approve, you approve things for the grammatical situations, or, and we're not generally adding full new courses.
Right.
The courses that we, if we were to come back to say we're going to be adding, would be elective courses to fit in the Next Level Programs of Study. And I don't think you all would, I mean, you're more than welcome to do that, but in terms of the deep, what exact course that is, I, I think you would leave that up to the people in the trenches doing, all right, what is the best course that fits our students and our school and our credentialing for our teachers? That's another piece. We may have, it may be the best thing, but we may not have a teacher with that credential to be able to even offer that course. So, so what I'm saying is, at this point, we're keeping things status quo, and as we continue to look at what is the best fit for us, one of the electives, one of the electives could change, as I said, from, say, was prep for college and careers and personal finance, that could then be, instead of that course being offered, maybe we offer a business course. But I need to have that kind of flexibility and be able to be that nimble to make sure that we're able to offer the best options for our kids.
Would we have to begin to list the courses that are offered at Area 31 in our curriculum guide?
We already do that. Area 31 sends a curriculum guide to us.
That we had, that we pinned to our own curriculum?
Yes, and we, and we post that on the, the high school website.
Okay.
So, and then Area 31 also comes and speaks with our students.
Sure.
Freshmen and sophomore students, because you have to apply, you can't go until your junior year. They'll be in this month, meeting with, I believe, Mrs. Baker's classes or health classes, but freshman classes and sophomore classes to go over their, their programs that they have.
And those programs still appear to fit the Next Level Programs of Study requirements the state's created?
Yes, they, and they're, they're having to make some shifts as well, because their courses that they currently offer through Perkins four, Perkins five, and now Next Level Programs of Study, they've, they've also had to make some adjustments as well. What we're trying to do as a school is have, I always like to, while Area 31 is great and we send a lot of our students there, not every student can go to Area 31. So, I always like to have options at our school, so if a student cannot go anywhere and they have to remain at Speedway, what options would they have? So, right now, we know for, in regards to Next Level Programs of Study, Project Lead the Way is set. We don't need to really do much with that. Now, we need to look at at least one other pathway outside of Project Lead the Way that fits our school. And again, if you go through these Next Level Programs of Study, the pathways are very intricate. It requires resources, credentialing, a lot of the, because it is CTE and it's technical, you need a lot of equipment, you need a lot of resources that we just would not be able to even offer at our school. That's why the business pathway sounds the most prudent, because you don't need, we don't need, we don't need, you know, an HVAC machine, or welding equipment, or things that you would need for some of these Next Level Programs of Study. And some schools are even doing some of the business pathways via online and, and different things, but we're looking at, we, obviously, we want ours to be with, with the teacher. We have a business teacher, and just trying to make sure that we have some of that flexibility that if that's the pathway we're going to offer, that is, as one of the pathways we're going to offer, we can actually implement that as well.
What's the timing? So, do we have time to, you know, give you an indication that we like what we're seeing, but let's bring this back in February? Or are you posting and already starting to have students?
Just from a timeline, we would, we always generally began scheduling in January, but we start, obviously, with the seniors. We don't have our eighth grade parent meeting normally until March. And so, the freshman kids, and the freshman kids are the last to be scheduled, and then the eighth grade, well, the eighth grade kids are the last to be scheduled. But we start off with our seniors. Nothing in this changing for our seniors. So, our senior students, for us to begin scheduling, we would like to start generally around January 20th, around that timeframe. We would go in, their course description, I mean, their course request forms wouldn't list anything that we're, we're really discussing, because it's, that's, again, the way schools are going, we have, we have so many different scenarios in one building. So, this would really impact current freshmen and your entering eighth graders.
Is there a likelihood that by the February meeting, some of these decisions would be made?
Yes, that, that is, that is, yes, that is very possible. And then, as I said, with the, and we have, the, the courses that we offer, in terms of the classes that our kids are, are able to sign up for, we're only, we're only speaking about an elective course. So, this is obviously, this is obviously not core class. So, it's not, like we're saying, we're doing away with, you know, we won't, we will no longer have calculus, or we'll no longer have, you know, a math course, or, you know, there's no English senior year.
Well, I do have a question about what's happening with art history.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll get to that part in a moment. Yeah, yeah.
Let's remember to talk about that.
Yeah, don't forget, because I, I have, hopefully, some, can give you some insight as to, to what's going on with that program.
So, you're rising seniors, rising juniors, if I remember right, you're all the way through the middle of February before you get to the rising sophomores.
Yes.
Is that close? And, and like you're getting, what we're all getting at is, we can really schedule them and then come back in February and take a look at what the, for the rising freshmen and sophomores.
Because this is online now, right?
Yeah.
So, we're not printing books that we have to reprint.
No, no, this is all online, yeah, yeah.
So...
And, and really, what it would do is, you know, like I said, we would have to really make sure, if we didn't do anything, say we don't, say we keep everything the same, currently, our option just simply would be Project Lead the Way for those kids that are not getting the concentrator. The good thing with that, they would not have to make that decision until sophomore year.
Yeah.
Because you would get through that, that concentration after three years. So, even your entering freshmen aren't needing to start immediately in a Next Level Program of Study. So, we, we may not have that answer for this year. It might be for next year.
Right.
But if we would still get the majority of our kids, as long as, it may be, hey, okay, our Next Level Program of Study for you is the, is the Project Lead the Way course. Student that is not interested in Project Lead the Way, other options you have are ASVAB testing. You get a 31 on the ASVAB, you can check off box three as well. Or it may be, well, we're looking at one of our business classes, not business classes, computer classes, the Python certification. And we're kind of doing a, we had a new student enroll who Mr. Dunphy is working with to get this Python certification, and he's kind of serving as the guinea pig to see if this could be something broader for our kids. Because again, when you think about the students who are not going to reach that three AP threshold, not going to pass that SAT, or don't pass the SAT, I wouldn't say not going to, but they don't pass the SAT, and what is going to be their box three scenario? That, as it currently stands, would be Project Lead the Way. If that doesn't, if that won't work, or they're not interested in Project Lead the Way, because you have, you may have a student that says, I just, engineering, I don't, you know, but it's more hands-on. We have a lot of kids that go into the program. Then we look at our other options, whether it's ASVAB, whether it's a certification, like I said, Python, or is it another elective pathway like business that I'm talking to you now about?
Well, and I can tell you, I would be absolutely willing to make a motion to authorize the handbook with the flexibility to adopt electives that fulfill the needs based on this NLPS thing, blah, blah, blah. But I'd feel more comfortable doing that next month, because it sounds like we can, we have the time. And so, if stuff has happened before then, that's great, we can have eyes on it, and if it's still in the works, then I feel comfortable at that point saying, hey, okay. And then I'd probably ask for some kind of caveat like, you know, let us know, and, you know, next time, next year, when we look at this, that gets highlighted too, so we recognize. But if we've got 30 more days to give you guys time to see if there's something that we can know, you know, ahead of the sophomores and freshmen registering, I think that would be ideal.
Are you okay with the, still moving forward with the, with the rising seniors?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, like, this is great in terms of what it can be used for that purpose, and then let's come back in next month and approve anything that's new.
Okay.
If there is, and, and at that time, I at least would be willing to, to move, and whether I would get a second, it looks like, that you guys have the authority and the flexibility.
And if there isn't anything new, we would just continue?
Yep.
As moving forward.
I guess that's my question, is there a reason why we shouldn't wait till next month? Because like Laura said, we can say, go ahead, we approve of this, what it is, is there, I'd rather you guys be satisfied with when this gets approved, rather than, if, if it's your advantage for us to do something tonight, we can do something tonight, but if it doesn't make any difference, and we wait, so I guess, which one of those would be better for you and the other guidance people?
Well, I know in, in, in regards to, as long as, if we're able to move with the, with the seniors and the juniors, ideally, you know, the, to be honest with you, business is the only option. Really, what we just need to do in terms of our due diligence, when I say business is our only option, I'm just saying practically, because I've looked at all of them, and the other ones require, like I said, just, just too many different resources, too many, too much different equipment that we just wouldn't be able to do. So, business would be the only option. What we still need to try to figure out, and we won't fully know this, is, you know, who is able to teach that course? Currently, our business teacher, computer science teacher is Mr. Dunphy. The computer science program is growing and is such that he may not be able to even, we may only be able to have one section of even what I'm describing, but we're still getting rid of one, one other elective. So, if you approve this tonight, for everyone, the flexibility that you're essentially giving me is saying, all right, okay, we may do away with one business elective to swap out for another business elective that falls under the Next Level Programs of Study. Because currently, the business electives that we have, like Intro, Intro to Business and Entrepreneurship, which is, is we've had for years, Personal Prep for College Careers and Personal Finance, neither one of those courses serve as a Next Level Program of Study. It's just basically an elective. So, if we're able to say, nope, this elective best serves our kids, and we get rid of, say, those two electives in lieu of this business pathway elective that I'm talking about, that would be the biggest change that would happen. And so, I could come back in February and say, this is what we're doing. I could, you know, notify you that if you gave me the flexibility now, this is what we did. So, we could, we could approach it both ways, because it's not really anything massive in terms of impacting our, our curriculum. We would be swapping out something for, for something else, because not everyone can teach the classes that we're even discussing. And so, as I said, the, the, the architecture or the manufacturing, those would continue to function as they are now, because we have 40 to 50 kids currently in those programs right now. So, we can't, we wouldn't cut those. The other business electives, if, if we didn't offer prep for college and careers and personal finance, that does not impact any student in any way in terms of diploma, in terms of meeting this initiative. Because those, those electives, they don't, for Next Level Programs of Study, you can't even count introductory level courses, except with Project Lead the Way. They will count introductory to, introduction to engineering. Every other introduction, introductory course with Next Level Programs of Study does not count as a concentrator.
Is their coursework offered by CIESC Indiana Online Academy that can help us with the pinch for a year or two as we transition?
That is something that we were, we were, when we were meeting this morning, that they would, they're, they are, they're programming as a business pathway, because most of those things don't allow you to do an online option, because it's so technical. It's hands-on.
Couldn't weld online.
Right, can't weld online, right. But yes, from what I am understanding, that is also something that we would be exploring. So, say, this doesn't work for, because of credentialing, because of staffing, whatever it may be.
Don't have the staffing to handle the load.
Yeah.
Then you need, you need another option.
Right.
And perhaps, perhaps the Indiana Online Academy could provide us a, a way to have a second section of something to handle the load as we transition from offering one set of.
Right.
Checkbox three concentrations to the new version of checkbox three concentration.
I think, though, that with that said, I mean, having, you know, having been through children in high school and this whole, I mean, adding the online thing has all kinds of ripple effects, it seems. And so, it's not the same as, you know, at the collegiate level where we just say, oh, let's just go online for the year. And so, that would be a piece of, I would imagine, that that has not changed. I mean, I'm sure it's a lot more feasible than it was back in the day, but gosh, there's very interesting ramifications when some kids are online and some aren't, and how that works, and how those, those classes count, and so that's an interesting piece, I would think.
Yeah, I, I think what, what we, when... Yeah, I think what, what we, when that discussion of the online business pathway came up, that would be, that would be the pathway. So say for instance, Mr. Dunphy's computer science, he just, there was not any sections. We wouldn't have some students taking the business course with Mr. Dunphy and some students doing, doing it online. It would be an online offering. So that way you don't run into, oh, this student has the instructor in front of them and this student has to get on the computer. But again, as I said, as, if we're able to, what we have always appreciated is that this board has always entrusted us to make the best decisions for kids. And we're still exploring that best decision. So whether you do it now or you do it February, if you do it now, it allows us to obviously go in, and we tell students all the time, these things could all, we offer classes all the time that students don't, that we actually don't offer because kids don't sign up for it. Or something changed where we needed this teacher to do this particular course, and so that class had to go away. And that happens, it happens, just as I mentioned with course capitalism, where kids may, we may have an influx in something that I didn't even anticipate, so now we need to open an additional section. Or, you know, freshmen can't take this course, they have to wait to sophomore year because so many 10th graders wanted to take it.
I, I guess I would just say that I am not comfortable approving without seeing exactly an online pathway, a fully online pathway. I just think that would then, I would need, there's a whole bunch of things I would want to be sure have been figured out. And so to the extent that that would be a change in the next 30 days, I would definitely like to have, to be able to have input, not input, but knowledge of that.
And I can tell you, at this, at this point, that was just one of the options that was put out there. At this point, we're obviously looking for, how does that work with our current teachers? Where it's not a, an online option. Again, and I want to make sure I'm using the proper language, we're looking at, that, where this even becomes an issue is for the very, very, very small group of kids where none of our other things, none of our other pathways per se works.
Well, I think that's an interesting piece of this, because, you know, our number one and two and three and whatever goals are, get all those kids taking AP classes and have all those kids get the number they need on the SAT. And so it is this weird putting time and resources and energy into something that is not the, what we're main goal trying to do.
Right, this would probably, if I'm looking at our current seniors right now, who don't have a pathway, that would require a waiver to receive their diploma, maybe eight kids that we're even having this, this discussion about at this point.
So we need permission basically for you to move with seniors and juniors, but come back so we can see the full 100% of what we're talking about, the backend of this.
And could you tell us more about the AP art history?
Yes, well, AP art history is just, we offer so many different AP courses. AP art history is one of those courses that is a lot of memorization, actually a lot of work in terms of, when I say a lot of work, a lot of assignments, just because it's a lot of memorization. So it's a lot of assignments that go into the AP art history class. And so we've tried to jumpstart AP art history over the past few years. And again, course capitalism, we start off with several, you know, at least a course, a class, a classroom full of students, 18, 16 to 18 students. Right now, I think we have five students and we just can't absorb, we can't have resources for an AP elective course for four students. It just, it just, when we have the need and the capacity for additional art classes that could accommodate up to 30 students.
What about, it seemed to me that at one time, and I could be wrong about this, because this like turned right after my youngest, you know, it became an AP class. But it seemed like part of the thinking at one time was this idea that that allowed you to get AP credit in the, you know, checking the arts box or whatever it is. So does that matter? So the student, I mean, there was like this, like students who are, you know, more geared to art and music and whatever can get an AP credit when not having to take a science. You know, is that an issue?
No, no, because, yeah, because obviously for academic honors, you have to have a fine arts credit, at least a year of fine arts. Most of our kids meet that fine arts requirement well before they take AP art history, whether it's through drawing and painting, choir, dance, band. So it was a nice, for the kid that was just science tech ed, it was, it was a great option. But again, I was.
It's not, it's being self-selected.
Yeah, it's not being self-selected. And then for that student, we have, I think, other options. As we mentioned, online, I mean, we, we have other options for a kid to get the fine arts credit for their academic honors diploma, whether it's through, through something with...
Well, if I remember correctly, this is one of the first, you know, one of the first AP classes.
Barfitis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like, we had the basics and it was one of the first, like, when we started to grow it. And it made sense then because you could pick it up, yeah, that makes sense.
So, yeah, and so, yeah, currently, we had 16, 18 students first semester, I think we're down to four, four or five. I don't know the exact number.
It's a tough AP exam, too. You guys see it coming across, you only get three to five, six kids through if you had 15. I mean, it's up there with chemistry and physics.
And just again, being in complete transparency, when we have as many AP courses that we have, a student is not required to, you don't want to create the protocol that you have to stand, I mean, part of our open access and rigorizing up and trying AP courses is that we will let you come out of it if it is, if you're struggling after four and a half weeks, or if you're, this is not a good fit for you. And it's served us well, because our kids are selecting more AP classes than we can give them. So you don't want to say, oh, you signed up for AP art history in August, now you have to stay there through May.
Yeah.
And the kids are, they're coming out of the class. So that was the major, major changes. I think you, the few other things I mentioned, I had the digital media on here because we're still looking at something to pair with health. And we've gone with the digital applications, if you remember, we had Microsoft certifications. This is what I mean when I say I appreciate you all's entrusting us to have some of this flexibility. We started off trying to do a Microsoft certification with our students, again, to try to embody the students that I'm referring to, that, the small amount of students that may need this, this CTE concentrator. That certification was not real successful for that profile of student. Those students were not getting that certification. So we're exploring again, different options there. You see the environmental sustainability for Project Lead the Way, again, just to give our kids additional options, that's on the, the second page of the cover letter that I gave you that discusses the, what environmental sustainability is. Currently, Ms. Mole Perry, who teaches that, teaches our Project Lead the Way courses, that would serve as, that could serve as in place of civil engineering or be taught in conjunction with civil engineering. So that was, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And the other things are just descriptions of those courses.
Is there a sense of the board whether we would like to pick this issue back up next month with further information on the options for the CTE pathway, or want to take action now?
I mean, I don't know if moving forward with, I guess I would be more in favor of moving forward with getting seniors and juniors and to the extent that, I'd even be okay saying, you know, to the extent that you think there are changes that fit squarely within what's been discussed tonight, that you can just let us know about that.
Okay.
And, but to the extent in your judgment that, yeah, this is a little different.
Yeah.
Then, you know, because we have the time, that you would come back and let us know, you know, if that makes sense. And I'd be happy to make that motion, as a, make that as a motion. In fact, I'll make it and then see if someone agrees with me. So I move that we, that we author, it's a language, update on, where is it, present the handbook. I, I move that we authorize, or that we approve the handbook with the authority and flexibility to adopt electives that would fulfill the purpose of what we've been discussing tonight, and that you would have the flexibility and your judgment to just keep moving forward with that unless there was something that was, that differed, how about this for a motion, from what we've talked about. And in that case, as it would affect only freshmen and maybe sophomores, you would come back and let us know that.
Absolutely.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Second one.
Repeat that.
Maybe recorded.
It's recorded.
That's right. Okay, is there any commentary or discussion of the motion as presented?
I would, the only thing that I would ask that's maybe a little bit, so let's say everything goes perfectly as planned and it's all within the scope of what we talked about, and so you're just going to kind of alert us to that after the fact, that's great. But next year, since that's brand new language, because we won't, you know, get online and see the handbook, and can that be highlighted as well?
Oh, yeah.
You know, like that's blue highlighted as we changed it last year type of thing?
Yep, I'll even write down blue.
I want to just add one thing, along with thanking our teachers for all they're doing, again, this is just another part of this, the guides department, Mr. Borum, all the hours.
Yep.
And we sincerely appreciate.
Thank you.
All that you all are doing. And you're going above and beyond and people are throwing balls to change this, change that. And we appreciate all you're doing for our kids.
Thank you.
Because we are here for all 100% of these kids, not just the 75 that are taking the AP course. We want to make sure we're all taken care of.
Right.
And that's, we need that little piece taken care of for all of our kids.
Well, and I mean, we, you guys always impress us so much. And again, so something that I hope all parents out there know, that, I mean, one of the things that, you know, we leave every retreat that we have, anytime we spend time with you administrators, is this notion that you know where every kid, where every kid is and what every kid needs. And that's unbelievable. And it's also, I think, just directly attributable to the success that we have and why, you know, why people love and are coming to Speedway High School. It's just impressive. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the trust and allowing us the professional judgment to try to make sure that we service all of our students. We'll be sure to keep you updated on, on all the discussion that we had today. It is very challenging to try to explain this, because there's so much in the weeds and so many nuances and details. So even trying to write this, I don't, do I keep that? Do I put this in, or is this too much explanation? So it is, it is constantly changing. I know a lot of people in education, our teachers, our counselors, are, you know, they're constantly doing different initiatives, different things, you have different diplomas in the building. So it's a lot to try to keep, you know, in your brain. So again, I just appreciate you all entrusting us to have this kind of flexibility and really try to best service our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there?
All right, appreciate it.
Got to have a vote.
Is there any further discussion or commentary?
Oh, sorry. Nope.
Would all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify? And that passes unanimously. The ninth item on the agenda this evening.
See you later.
Is an update on the Speedway High School Safe Entry Project.
Mr. President, the Speedway High School Front Entry Area Project is projected to begin after spring break. Right now, the bids are out to the public and we will open those bids up on February 4th. I'll bring it to the February meeting for you guys to fully see and make decisions on. But if we start after spring break, if everything's on, you know, to the plan, we'll finish the beginning of the 2022, actually, it'll be the beginning of, yeah, of the 20, the fall of 2022 school year. The entry area doors and the main piece of this, of the public visitors, will be moved from the inside of the building. So right now, when you walk through the double doors, you walk into the building, you turn right, and then you turn right into the office. That is in full area to where you can go anywhere in the building. We're moving it from that entry point to in between the two corridors of the two sets of doors there when you first enter the high school. That's the purpose, that's the main reason why we're doing this, to where there's a single point of entry for visitors or guests that are coming into the building. There will be other things such as flooring, ceiling, lightning blinds remodeled for the conference room, to where the conference room is currently today, it'll be moved into where the secretaries are sitting at this time. So the rooms will be flipped around, but that's, the purpose again, is for people to be able to walk straight in to an office and a secure area, and then they can enter rest of the building. Again, the bids will be open on February 4th at 2:00 PM in central office. You guys are all welcome to attend after receiving the bids. Again, I will be bringing this information to you at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
So the current second set of glass doors, that, those are just locked?
They are.
After student entry in the morning?
Yes, like in every building. You got to get the people in and then we'll lock it all down. So those two doors, sets of doors, walking in, to the right was my old office, the principal's office, and to the left's the library. That's where we're going to punch that out, to where people can see people walking up the walkway, turn right, and then we can disperse them in. And if we have a large crowd, like, once, I remember when we, back in the day when you went to school and registered, we'd usually have a long line. But at that point in time, those are all different reasons that we can open up other areas and make sure we get people in, so.
Any other questions? Okay. The 10th agenda item this evening is to acknowledge grants received of $421,824.23. The 11th item on the agenda this evening is to approve the personnel report.
Personnel report in your packet has two resignations, five recommendations for employment and a volunteer coach. Resignations include Patty Judkins, who is a, been a longtime custodian for us, Paul Schaefer, who was algebra, pre-algebra teacher at the junior high school, who resigned his position on December 21st. Employment is for Caitlin Snyder to work as a teacher at the junior high school in place of Mr. Schaefer. Nick Yadi has a temporary teacher contract that's going to take over disability leave. Tim Kurtz is the head varsity track coach at Speedway High School. Nolan Dalcorobo is the Speedway High School Assistant Swim Coach, I think he's coaching everything in swimming right now. Amy England is a custodian. And the volunteer coach is James Sims Jr., who's going to be a volunteer wrestling coach at the junior high school. My recommendation is to approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll move that we approve the personnel report.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Is there a discussion on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor of approving the personnel report as presented, please signify? And that passes unanimously. The 12th agenda item this evening is to recognize visitors and to handle any other business for the board. There appears to be no other business for the board. The 13th agenda item this evening is to, in the meeting, to go approve claims and sign warrants. Thank you all very much.